Email planning staff and your email will be entered into the record. You can drop off or mail a letter. The record for this project stays open until the city commission makes the final vote. And so just because you or your neighbors weren't able to fully get their comments tonight, this is not the last night of the process. And with that, I'm going to pass over to Pete Walter, who will present the PowerPoint for tonight.
Thank you. So Chair Powell, as you heard from Christina, we sent out letters to the affected property owners and also to property owners within 300 feet of those properties. And we have on the screen a three maps, which are, you can see the highlighted areas that the staff is recommending be looked at for potential for rezoning to higher densities. All of these three areas are currently designated in the comprehensive plan for the city as low-density residential. And we have three zoning types that implement our low-density residential comprehensive plan designation. Those are R8, R10, R8, and R6. In one case here, we're asking for input from the public on the possibility of rezoning to a higher density than R6. And this is the area adjacent to Central Point Road. And we've shown on this map the colors of the zonings adjacent to it. To the north of the highlighted area, you'll see a R3.5-zoned area, which is the Tugs Landing subdivision. And then below that, slightly to the east, you've got a brighter yellow area, which is R6 zoning. Then the sort of the orangey area around it is R8 zoning, and that's to the southeast and the southwest. And then to the north, on the other side of Central Point Road, from this highlighted area, you've got R10 single-family and R8 single-family zones. So in this case, we're looking at the potential to upzone that property to R8, R6, or R3.5. The second area that we're looking at is adjacent to Warner Parrot Road and where the intersection of Warner Parrot Road and Kanema Road is. And there are properties in this area which are slightly larger. Some of the structures on those properties are located to the, you know, fairly close to the roads, and there's land available behind those properties that potentially could be subdivided. And in this case, we're looking at rezone, potential rezone to R6 single-family residential, which is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. And then the third area that we're looking at is the area on, adjacent to Central, sorry, Leland Road. And these are properties that we're looking at as rezoning to R8. And those extend from Highfield Road to the north there, I think, down to south of the interchange of Myers there. Some of the factors that staff looked at when we were looking at this was, is there existing infrastructure such as sewer water and wastewater facilities in these areas, as well as parks? We're looking at where the land value, the appraised land value is higher than the building value, so that the likelihood of redevelopment is cost-effective. We're also looking at larger contiguous parcels where there's compatibility with adjacent high-density zoning, and whether they're close to commercial areas so that people don't have to travel very far in order to get goods and services. And some of these areas are close to the Hilltop Shopping Center and services on Malala Avenue, at least within a mile of those areas. Some of the advantages that we are seeing with increased density is the ability to accommodate growth within our urban growth boundaries so that we can efficiently handle higher density in urban areas and not extend urban growth beyond the urban growth boundary in the county. And this is a sort of a basic tenet of the Oregon land use system, is that urban growth is best accommodated within cities, and that low-density and rural development and farms and forestry is preserved outside of the city-urban growth boundary. That's driving a lot of this. Other aspects of it are the efficiency of providing infrastructure to higher density. You get economies of scale. And when infrastructure costs as much as it does to install now, it is a lot easier to accommodate density where there's existing infrastructure. We're also trying to improve the proximity and access to amenities in the urban area. And through that proximity and access, we get additional benefits such as better pedestrian connections, better sidewalks, curbed gutter, and storm sewer, and those sorts of things, as well as an improved connectivity in our vehicular and pedestrian and bike systems. So we try to do this through implementing our transportation system plan, which works in close proximity with our comprehensive plan to try to get better transportation connections in denser areas. Another goal is to try to diversify housing choices across a range of income levels so that people can enter the housing market without having to spend a lot of money. And finally, when developers do develop in the city, they pay system development charges. These system development charges go to pay for road infrastructure that is used, you know, as to offset the impacts of their development. And as the city's going through a system development charge review right now to try to get our system development charges to where they actually accommodate the impacts of development, those charges can be used citywide. And they, the entire city system benefits from system development charges, not just the areas adjacent to the developments. Naturally, the challenges from increased density are things that we deal with on a regular basis as we do development review. These include the loss of existing tree habitat in urban areas, as well as upland habitat. And we have overlay zones to protect our streams and to protect against bad development on slopes that aren't stable. We notice increased vehicular trips on neighborhood collector and minor arterial roads. And one of the challenges with collection of system development charges is that they're not always directed at specific impacts of immediate development. They're there to address system-wide needs. So another aspect of this is there's potentially a lack of community support for increasing density from existing and abutting property owners who do not see the benefits to higher density zoning. And we recognize that. Also, we have existing areas which are developed incrementally over time, and they have a unique identity, such as a rural feel. And one of the most sensitive aspects is how do you design sensitively in order to offset the impacts to that rural feel? And so that's a major challenge as you're getting denser in a community. And we have a couple of exhibits, actually exhibits A through C, which are new exhibits that weren't in the original packet. We've received several requests from property owners to be included in the city-initiated rezoning process. And those requests are submitted to the planning commission for consideration. In some cases, the public benefit or the land use compatibility of some of these areas is not readily apparent. There's more study needed, and there are issues such as overlay zones and natural resource habitat, which normally would require a lot more study before staff could recommend rezoning. And so in particular, with regard to exhibits A and B submitted for rezoning, our community development director has looked at those requests and recommended that they be processed through the owner-initiated rezoning process, our standard rezoning. In other cases where you have a property that it makes sense for it to be rezoned because it's directly adjacent to an existing R8 zone, and it's one parcel that would naturally redevelop in the same way as everything around it, we have supported those requests. And they're fairly straightforward, and we'd be happy to discuss those in more detail with you as we go forward. So just to summarize that, staff is supportive of the request submitted as Exhibit C, which is a request to rezone from R10 property at 19245 Pease Road. It's adjacent to R8 subdivision to the north. And there's already a request in your packet to be, for, to rezone to R3.5. And that's submitted. Let me just get the gentleman's name. That was submitted by Paul Bell regarding 427 Warner Parrot Road. And he's requesting rezoning to R10, R3.5. To the planning commission, this is at your discretion to consider these properties as part of the legislative rezoning process. And you're welcome to ask staff as many questions you want about those.
Okay, thank you. Questions? I've got a couple. When we talk about system development charges, when you're looking at, you mentioned, Pete, that they can be used for citywide resources, infrastructure. When you have, let's say, a R10 goes to R8, and if you were to do a traffic study, and let's say it increased the traffic by 2%, what's the, can SDCs be used to enhance that street, enlarge the street? Can SDCs, what's the break there? How much can we use? How much can't we use? And R10 to R8, would you get more or be able to use more SDCs if you went from an R10 to an R3.5? How does that work?
Okay. Well, systems development fees are basically a way to look at off-site impacts a development has. That, and the fee that you pay at the time of the building permit is considered your proportional share of your off-site impacts. And that number we are currently looking at to potentially raise, and there's a study that Nancy Kreschauer, our Public Works Director, is working on. But in theory, what you have is a capital improvement plan that is created through our transportation system plan of off-site improvements that are needed. You know, an intersection fix, a roundabout, a new light, you know, I'm trying to think of all the different, you know, Beaver Creek Road example was a capital improvement project that we happened to pay through our renewal fees. But those were also helped paid by systems development fees. And the idea is through the land use process, you can improve your frontage. But we all acknowledge that each vehicular trip has effects throughout citywide. So just because I live on South End Road, I'm going to be driving through the intersection of Beaver Creek and 213. And my vehicle trip will have an impact on that. And through my systems development fees, that goes into the larger fund that can address these capital improvement projects. And system development fees work the best when they are not directed to a specific regional project, but when they can be citywide. And so your question is, can those extra homes that get built because you've increased the zoning help address an issue down the street? It can, but you have to think of it more globally. It's more of a meta-analysis that are more macro. That systems development fees will go into a fund that will help pay for potential improvement, but it's based on how the city prioritizes those capital improvement projects. And what we found out talking to, I know in the Park Place Concept Plan, looking at if you direct your capital improvements to be only, of SDCs to be only done in specific subregions, it's a lot harder for a city to come up and plan for those projects and to be able to get the money you need to be able to fund those at a reasonable time period. And that's why the city commission, through the capital improvement program, prioritizes those needs. And so the cause-effect of 10 more houses being built here helps improve the intersection of Myers Road and Central Point is, will happen, but it's not a cause-effect, I guess, if that's the answer.
Yeah. And so specifically, let's say you have an area now that's zoned R10, and you have 25 homes on it, and you zone it to R3.5, and you now have 250 homes on it on, let's say, Pease Road. And if Pease Road maybe can't carry that traffic load, understandably, if that's going to be developed, the developer has some commitment and has to pay for, and if we choose to say you need to make that road wider, then that can be happening. But if not, if not, then that would go into a fund for transportation, for the city to make a decision somewhere down the road to make Pease Road a better road.
And that's always the issue of balancing, you know, making your onsite improvements and then balancing when you pull the trigger to, and you can acquire enough money to do those off-site capital improvement projects. And it's always a balance. And, you know, kind of talking about concurrency is always kind of the issue out there is you can't make a developer solve every intersection problem. You use systems development fees to get the money to be able to do that. And, you know, the question is, do we have, are systems development fees high enough to meet our capital improvement program needs? That is something we're looking at right now, and they very well may go up to meet that.
And the real question is, you can rezone something which may stay exactly the same for 25 more years. If the people that live there don't choose not to sell and choose not to develop, it may never change.
Correct.
Same with annexation.
Right. And additionally, rezoning the property doesn't change their tax bill.
Okay.
So there's no increase in fees to the, I mean, taxes to the city until redevelopment happens.
Okay. And then one other question, maybe you can, maybe you have a little difficulty answering, but let's say you have an R10 lot, and that allows a certain size home on that lot. If you had an area with just R10, how, I guess the question is, how many more homes could you put on an R8 lot? Would it increase by 2%, 5%? Or is that a mathematical question, or would you have to actually see the lot?
Well, let's assume you had a 20,000-square-foot lot, and you annexed into the city at some point, and you had a 20,000-square-foot lot in the county. You annexed into the city, it would default automatically to R10 under our annexation policy. If we rezone that to R8, you may, you wouldn't have any additional density, you know, you'd still only have two lots out of that. But if you're, you know, if you have an acre, then potentially you get an additional two lots.
Two lots, right. Okay. So it's mathematical. It's just a question I had. I'm trying to put, it's easy to say R10 to R8, or then when you start thinking about what R8 versus R6, that's, R6 is almost double the amount of homes that you currently have.
Right, yeah.
And then you go 3.5, and it's four times what you currently have. So it's just, I mean, kind of help everybody think how, what that actually means. Thank you. Richard Stein.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on the discussion about how the SDCs are actually prioritized through the capital improvement plan. My specific question about that is, what's the frequency of the update of the capital improvement plan?
That's a good question. That is actually processed through Nancy Kreschauer and Public Works, so we don't deal with that on a day-to-day basis. And I'll have to get back to you on that. I know it's not yearly, but I know it's, it happens more than just when we have updated the transportation system plan, which was last updated in 2001. And I know we've updated the capital improvement plan since then.
Thank you. One other question I have. In our packet, it says that there was an analysis that included a mathematical evaluation of Plaquemine County tax assessor data for areas where land values are generally greater than the building values. I'm wondering, can you just speak a little bit more about that evaluation and that data? And I'm more curious about whether or not there were other areas besides the three that we're looking at that were highlighted, I guess, in that data set.
Yeah, I actually did the analysis. And, you know, what I was looking for, I mean, there's a parcel here and there by themselves. But what I really found within the central area, within a mile or so of Hilltop, that those really were the concentration of areas that had that issue. When you get closer to the fringe of the city limits and urban growth boundary, you by de facto have that situation because you have that underdeveloped. What we were looking at was pockets of multiple tax lots within about a mile, mile and a half of the Hilltop area that met that criteria.
Thank you.
Any other questions to staff at this time? Okay. Then let's open it up for the public to have some comment on this. And we'll let anybody that wants to speak, speak, and feel free to do so. We prefer, if you haven't filled out one of these little forms and you'd like to speak, go ahead, and then fill out the form afterwards. One moment, please. And then what you'll do is come up forward to the desk here, give us your name and city of residence, and then feel free, you've got three minutes. There's a little flashing light up here when it turns yellow, kind of like the debates that everyone ignores anyway, but go ahead and keep an eye on that. So you had a question, sir? Come forward and, if you would, and if you could give me your name and city of residence.
My name's John Moore, and I live on Myers Road.
Okay, John.
And I also own one other lot on Myers Road. And I wanted to just quickly follow up with a question you had to them on the SDCs. Is there money that the SDCs has already collected that is available to help improve Myers Road before anything happens as far as rezoning and more density becomes available? Because that road has been a residential road since 1970, and nothing's been done to improve it, nothing's been done to increase the, or handle the increased density on that, or travel on that road because of its designation now as a minor arterial, even though that designation has not been met by any standard of the road, like 12-foot lanes and bicycle lanes and sidewalks or anything. So it looks like the cart's being put before the horse when you decide they're going to increase the density on that area, and then we want to make the improvements, or we're going to change the designation of it, then we're going to improve it, or something like that.
Want to address that?
Sure. You bring up a great point. The designation of a street to be in a minor arterial or a neighborhood collector is two issues. One is the reality of what it functions. I mean, there's some roads that just function as neighborhood collectors and minor arterials, no matter what their size. And then there's the aspect of what we can do as a city to bring that up to a situation where it needs to be, or know that when development comes, we have a higher standard. We would require more dedication of the street at the time of the subdivision, or we'd require a wider sidewalk, or we'd require the bicycle lanes. So the designation of a street is helpful in many aspects. One, which we work on a daily basis for development review, is it gives us the legal trigger to require additional dedication and improvements. On the non-development level, which I think you're indicating, which is the capital improvement program, I can tell you, I can grab the capital improvement. From what I know, it's either not on the list, or it is very, 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 very far down on the bottom. And one of the main issues with the capital improvement is looking at are large intersection addressing, a lot of them dealing with, one of the big ones is Myers Road and Central Point Road and Warner Parrot, Warner Milne and Lynn Avenue. That's a big intersection on the capital improvement plan, looking at, I can just name a bunch of them, but all large intersections in the city that are going to take multiple funds to find resolution. No one development can change that. Putting sidewalks on properties that are not going to be redeveloped is...
But can I interrupt a second?
Yeah, sure.
But the designation of the street has already been changed to minor arterial before the requirements for that type of street have been met.
Exactly. Because in order to get development to build, you have to legally identify that as a higher level, and that's acknowledging an existing situation, and then...
But three years ago was proposed, and I understood that. But to have it already designated is what I don't understand.
Actually, that area was designated in our 2001 transportation system plan as a minor arterial, and we've been using that legal designation to...
No, I saw it less than five years ago as they proposed instead of a designated, and then recently it was designated, my understanding is.
Let me check when we get to the next one. I'll grab the transportation system plan.
Okay, my three minutes are up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But that brings up a good point of how we use a transportation system plan on a local development case, and then how we use it to plan in the future for future development.
Well, and to address the cart before the horse, unfortunately, that's what we're faced with, with Measure 5 and Measure 50 that has, gives us no money. So we have to wait until development can come in and help us develop that property, and all we can do is get SDCs to help pay the funding for that. It'd be, we'd all love it if we had money upfront. We could just go in and say, well, we're going to lay down the streets, and we'll build around it, and the streets will be just the way we like them. They did it in Arizona, they've done it in a lot of places, but they were cash-rich then, and we aren't. And it's difficult to do that. So there are, most times, we do put the cart before the horse. But in an annexation or a rezoning, we don't know what's going to happen there. We're going to re, we may rezone it, we may not. We may rezone it to be an R6 and say, down the road, it could be 10, 15 years, depending on the current situation out there, the marketing situation. Maybe nobody wants to build right now. So if you could build a road, I was going to say bridge to nowhere, but I'll say road to nowhere instead. Anyway, so let's move forward here. We've got, I'll take you in order here. Kathy Swanson.
Hi, Kathy Swanson. I'm at 1208, oh, excuse me, 12085 Meadow Lawn. And I hope I can do this because I work at the tax assessor's office. I was on the phone all day today. Tax goes one out.
I'd like to talk to you about my tax.
Well, I'm talking to you right now. And this was actually pretty good timing because I grew up on Myers Road since 1961, so I know exactly what this gentleman is talking about. I have seen it gone from a road where you get maybe, right now, I come off of Pease Road in the morning, and my commute's about a mile to the assessor's office. And I used to just pull out, nobody cars, no cars. Right now, it's not unusual for me to come to or from work, or to or from lunch in the middle of the day, and there's 25 cars in front of me and behind me, and I'm counting them because I just can't believe that, you know, I'm seeing that many. And this is on Leland Road and going down to Pease, and Pease goes right down to Hagan's, so we've got everybody coming from the other side of Lynn Avenue heading to Hagan's, and they're heading on that road. So it is becoming a very busy road. In the mornings, I've got traffic that stops because there's schoolchildren walking to Gardner, and there's nowhere for anybody to go. There's nothing on the side for them. So I think, you know, even just widening that some, I mean, we're kind of going in the ditch tonight coming because there was cars coming in our direction, and, you know, there's nowhere to go. But anyway, we are the big piece at the end of the cul-de-sac. I think probably our main issue is, I hope somebody tomorrow, if the sun is shining, jumps in their car, take a ride out there, go to the end of Meadow Lawn. That cul-de-sac is not where it is on the map, and everybody, I think, has already known that because we've been in here. I don't know what we do to correct that. I don't know if that's something that we have to initiate, but in 19... But in 1979, when the subdivision was put in, the county evidently went well. And so it's not where it is on the map. It is actually, you can see the spot on the map where our house is. It's right in front of our house. We are the cul-de-sac, the half of it there. So it does not go out into the field. It actually ends right there at the beginning of our tax lot. So something, I think, needs to be done before we move forward with anything with our tax lot to get this straightened out. Because the problem is, you can see where the subdivision is behind us. That road has now been bumped through. We've got probably a few more weeks until it's getting paved because of the subdivision in the last two tax lots there.
In the dark brown?
In the dark brown.
Okay.
Right, there's already a road going through, ending just where you can see that, if you just run the road straight down to ours, it's ending there. And I think it's in the back of some people's minds that it's going to go straight into that cul-de-sac, which physically, it cannot do that. There are people's homes very close by. We've got some neighbors here whose homes are right next to the, a little alleyway kind of driveway. And the cul-de-sac just isn't there. So that's something that needs to be addressed. We basically bought this property with the intention that someday it was going to be developed. As I said, I work for the county, and I know what's going to happen up here on the hill. So we're not opposed to the zoning. We don't want to see R3.5, obviously, because we like it there. We are a really nice neighborhood. It was, like I said, built in '79. So everybody has a fairly large piece of property right now, and that's their home site. We have outbuildings and garden and whatnot. But we do have an acre that we are looking at at some point, actually, probably a little more than an acre, to rezone and divide off and do something with, because that was our intention. I believe behind us, and I'm not sure if you can answer this, I think it's an R8 in behind us. Is that R6 or R8? That's not on your map yet, so.
Oh, okay.
But it should be the same as the other subdivision in yellow.
The bright yellow is R6.
That's R6?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's the subdivision there, yeah.
You know, I think probably in the back of our minds, we're thinking if we were to, you know, be consistent with what's happening behind us, which I believe is either an R6 or an R8. That's probably, you know, something that we would not be opposed to because, as I said, that was kind of our intention at that point. But I think my biggest fear right now is that somebody's making a plan somewhere, and that cul-de-sac is just in the wrong spot.
Okay.
And because of that, there really is no access coming off of that cul-de-sac. I mean, it's a driveway.
Right.
And we don't want access coming off of that. We've got a lot of families that just recently moved in, little kids. And I think a big part of that was it's a dead-end road. You know, if we get access out to the other road going through the subdivision, coming into ours, maybe going out to Central Point or something, but that cul-de-sac is just not going to work to extend.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
But I do think they do need to look at the road system out there. Because we're getting so many homes up on top of the hill, it's not handling it.
Thanks. Okay. The next one is, we've got Lamore L. Geisler, Geisley? Thank you.
Well, I live on 19161 Claremont Way, which is right next, it's right next to the adjoining lot that property faces Myers. And I don't know if you guys ever drive on them roads. I've been in Oregon City since 1965. I haven't seen very much of road improvement in Oregon City since 1965, except Mulalla Avenue, Washington Street, and what they did downtown. But what have we proved as far, we put all these houses in. What if we improved to get people to drive out of the city? They come by Claremont Way, Myers Road, and Leland. That's all the people from Central Point, Pease Road, everybody comes through there. Right? And I tell you, it's pretty bad because, I tell you what happened Friday night. I was making a left-hand turn into my driveway, and a lady honked behind me and gave me the finger because I had to stop because there was a car coming from the front. That's how bad traffic is in the afternoon. And we haven't done anything. And here, we want to put, what, 200 houses in or 200 families in, with probably two cars each family? You know, I don't see that that's any planning. That's misplanning. Sorry.
It's okay, you have your opinion, certainly do.
So that's my concern. You know, I said a lot of times on Leland Road that if we'd been horse and buggies, we couldn't go anyplace because the horse would break its leg. We're lucky we have cars.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Robert Happala? Happala? Thank you.
Robert Happala, I live at 18974 South Leland Road. I'll show you where it is. I'll be the bad guy. I've been there since 1976, and that whole section was county. And some years back, when Dan Fowler and John Block were in power here, they forces in an annexation by creating an island, so you've got no choice, you're city. Well, all right. Well, the next move is they tried to shove a local improvement district down our throat in that whole section. You folks are going to pay for that freeway that goes through Myers Road, Leland Road. It's going to be a north-south arterial. We fought them all the way to the Boundary Commission, and Metro ruled in our favor. The city wants to widen the street through there, they will pay for it. The homeowners will pick up the cost of the curbs and sidewalks. Well, that's where it stood. Well, since then, it's gotten so much density all around there. And it's not just Oregon City area. You've got people from Mulalla South cutting off by Hagan's, up Myers Road, up Leland Road. You can't get maneuvered around there. I can't back out of my driveway anymore. I've got to back in so I can pull out. And I don't see where the density is going to get any better. I mean, I realize that there's nothing you can do about it now. But changing that to R8, I know in my position, that changes the setback. So that's going to be running even closer to the house. And for instance, I mean, there's been three or four wrecks in the last couple of months. Claremont Way, they wiped out some fences and some bushes. Myers Road, somebody got killed on Lynn Avenue. A week ago tonight, hit and run nailed my bushes, took out six arborvitus, seven feet tall, three feet in diameter, and mailboxes scattered them out in the street and road. And the traffic is getting so bad, I'm thinking, well, if this street does get widened, the setbacks are so close, well, are they going to nail a house the next time? You know, I mean, it's, the traffic is a little bit too thick, and the population is just increasing a little too much for what we've got around the area. But being a dinosaur around for 30-some years, I mean, I'm going to be opposed to any kind of development just on the grounds that it's just too crowded, you know, from what it used to be in '76. But for whatever that's worth, you know, it's just, maybe the setback is what's going to bother me. If the street does get widened, whatever, I don't plan on developing it. But I suppose neighborhood properties do plan on splitting up if they do, and their development charges will set back whatever for the street. And I suppose eventually, the city will just have a domain, the remaining ones, and say, well, hey, we're going to widen it out whether you like it or not. Whatever happens, it will happen, I guess.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Okay, Mike Carr? Got one right.
I'm Mike Carr. I live at 12401 South Comerger Drive, Oregon City, right on the corner of Pease Road and Comerger Drive. I'll just echo basically all the statements that these other folks have made. The traffic has gotten worse with all the different developments that are going in around our neighborhoods. And I realize that in time, it's all going to get developed at some point. So when that time comes, my vote would be no less than R8. But traffic is the main thing. It's ongoing. Whenever we've talked to the Planning Commission before, or anybody in City Hall, Pease Road, Leland Road, it's never even on the list. Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Okay, next, I've got Judith Deis? Dees?
I really need to do this today. I live at 19016 Bedford Drive, Oregon City. And I just feel like research has shown when a population is increased in an area through dense or, through density, dense housing, crime rates increase. So if you have more houses on a piece of land, you're going to have a higher crime rate. You're going to have city services, including water and sewage systems, have to be shared by this higher population, or costs increase, and add services to serve the bulging population. Rezoning farmlands to increase the city funds means more housing, less farms, more industry, and higher urbanization. Are we turning paradise into little boxes? Is this what people want? I think the answer is no. More housing on less land means more children, which in turn means more of a need for schools and additional taxpayer costs. Not what a taxpayer wants to hear if they want to keep their house. This area is, used to not be called urban. People moved here to move out of the urban area and be closer to nature, to have vegetable gardens, trees, backyards for their children, and play and live in nature. I don't know anyone who moves out of the city to live in a house so close to another house that they can hear their neighbor's toilets flush, or to be so close to their children can use ladders to go between one house bedroom and another. Do we actually want to live so close to each other that we all know each other's business? I think not. We might as well move back to the city and live in row houses with stoops out front. I thoroughly doubt that greater density housing could increase property value. Greater density will not protect existing farmlands in our area. Instead, this area becomes part of a sprawling city. A sprawling city that is eating up farmlands and creating high-density housing blended with industry. Once upon a time, we had a beautiful view of Mount Hood. Now we have a view of a tall brick building. We have to weave in and out of narrow streets because of businesses blended with dense housing to find our parking place at our own house. And the noise, increased industry, increased housing, increased population leads to increased noise. It doesn't matter if there's light rail or cars and trucks, they still make more noise. Okay, regarding conditional uses, 17.08.030, all of the conditional use permits proposed in this district should be prohibited. All of these proposals do not contribute to green living. They are part of dense urban housing. They are part of living in a big city. Oregon City does not want to be part of a big urban city. No one wants to live next to a bed and breakfast, boarding house, cemetery, crematory, mausoleum, columbrium, daycare center, nursery school, large emergency services, including massive jail facilities that tower over our houses, residential care facilities with frequent ambulance and emergency response teams day and night, educational training facilities with additional vehicle and human noises, religious institutions that can make it impossible for residents to park or live without increasing noise or assisting living facilities, group homes or nursing homes from high populations of patients and employees. People want to live in houses with yards that are big enough for family projects, garages for their cars, and space between their house and the next house. People want to live with peace and quiet, not on top of their neighbors. One of the recent mistakes Clackamas County has made is not to listen to what people want. We have overbuilt houses too close to each other, and they are not selling. Please listen to the people and make Oregon City a more livable community.
Thank you. Okay, the next, Cheryl Hall?
I live at 19000 Central Point Road, and what she said. All my questions actually have been answered except for one. If your property's on the National Registry, who trumps who?
The zoning is just what you could potentially do in the future. So, you know, for example, your house, which I'm aware of, let's say it even went to the super highest, the highest zoning of our 3.5. That actually really, if you never choose to redevelop, it will not affect your property taxes. And only you can choose when you want to redevelop. And on the National Register, since it's a local landmark, if you did choose to redevelop, we would go down the same path that the McCarver House and Ainsworth House did, which would, no matter what the zone was, would you carve out the portion of the historic property being the main house and the outbuildings. And then if there was any remainder area, those could potentially be part of a new subdivision. But the Historic Review Board and Conservancy District Preservation Office would look to see if the lot that the historic house is on is big enough for it to retain its historic identity. So each historic property is going to come up with a different answer of how many lots could I have based on my zoning.
Okay. And basically, we're just opposed to the rezoning, just because of the traffic and houses not selling and everybody on top of each other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no more sheets. Does anyone else like to speak? Come forward and give me your-
Joseph Manning, I live at 19400-
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, Joseph Manning, I live at 19400 Myers Road.
Thank you.
And I've been there since '73. Myers Road used to be 25 miles an hour for a good reason. It's called what they call blind driveways. Okay, you know, you put out in there, now it's 35 miles an hour. You have the same problem now, you drive wider sidewalks, wider streets, not going to make any difference. We get traffic from where everybody says it comes in. They changed Mulalla Avenue, we got more traffic. I asked them if they were going to do any improvements on our street the other day. I went down to Public Works after they slurried Moccasin to 213, some of the side roads, some of over here in McCord, all those things. Are you going to do ours, the rest of the street? It needs it bad. No, I said, why? Because if the street is over 15 years old, we don't slurry it again. I said, really? It's falling apart. We have concrete trucks, lumber trucks, semi-trucks, and a hump-e-majillion car is going by. I used to be able to, before they did Mulalla Avenue, I used to be able to sit in a chair with a pad and paper. And this is when Officer Mutter was here on the police force. And I used to be able to count 300 cars an hour before we got more traffic. And I can count a lot more than that now. And I have a question for you. You said if you, when you get rezoned, it will not increase your taxes, right? Unless you, unless you need to vote. Then why up in Park Place area here, I don't know how long ago it was, that those people up there got their taxes increased because they had the potential to develop their property? And there was a big scream about that.
Was that regard to the sewer installation?
No, it had nothing to do with it. It was in the paper. They had the potential to develop their property, and so their taxes went up.
When we're done, I'd like to give more information because that is not the information we're getting from the tax assessor now. And I was working with the Park Place-
Okay, well, I understand. Okay, but my main concern is that we have the blind driveways. They still have the blind driveways on Leland Road. And yet, if you, like they say, if you increase the housing, you increase the traffic. And at 35 miles an hour right now, I'm bulling my way out onto the street. They will slow down, I will get out of my driveway. And yet, there's no enforcement out there hardly to speak of. So at 25 miles an hour, they would not go anybody over unless they were doing 40. That was the minimum because the ticket was bigger. So we have potentially people now that are doing a lot faster than that, since they can do 35. And I'm concerned with, like you say, if you bring more in, there's going to be a lot more traffic coming through. And I personally, I won't develop my place. There's no way. I've got an outbuilding, it wouldn't allow for it. So I don't know if I'm going to get stuck with something because I won't develop. And is this a prelude to sewer? If somebody on our street wants to develop? Is that a prelude, the sewer happened to come down the street?
If you are to redevelop a parcel, all new homes need to connect to city sewer. And that's part of the development is required to connect to sewer. So most likely, you're connecting to the nearest sewer and installing sewer along your front edge and to where it needs to get to get to the existing sewer line. your front edge and to where it needs to get to get to the existing sewer line.
Just the houses that have to connect.
Nope, they do not have to connect. Nope. Nope. Unless you are failing, you do not have to connect to sewer.
Okay. Hold on, I need to have you on the microphone, because this has, this is all public hearing, and I have to have you on. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, but please do it at the microphone. Sir? You give us your name again, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Lee Geisler. And my thing is, if they have to connect up to sewer, where do they put their septic tanks that they already have in the backyard? You're not going to build a house on top of septic tank. And that's what you're talking about if you redevelop here.
That's correct. Oftentimes, if a property owner is redeveloping, it is oftentimes the relocation of their septic tank. And in that case, they decommission the septic tank, and they often have to hook up both homes. But that's the choice of the property owner at the time of development. Some property owners can keep their existing septic tank because they have enough land to still redevelop. It's a case-by-case basis, but it's up to the property owner to decide if they want to, to decommission their existing septic tank, because that provides the land available to build on.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right, well, seeing none, are there any questions of the commission at this time? Well, at this time, we will, oh, go ahead. Christine?
I think staff, we have some, we can have some comments.
Oh, yeah, sure. Absolutely.
To go back to Mr. Moore's comment at the very beginning about the minor arterial of Myers Road and Leland Road, I grabbed the 2001 Transportation System Plan, which is our planning document. It's an ancillary document to our comprehensive plan, and it was adopted in 2001. And this is what we use for all of our land use decisions, and when we are reviewing zone changes and other type III and IV decisions. And I'll leave it here for anybody who wants to take a look at it. Figure 5.1 is the classification system for the city showing neighborhood collectors, minor arterials, and major arterials. And Myers Road, Leland Road is a minor arterial on the 2001 Transportation System Plan. So we've been treating it by development applications as a minor arterial. So we've been acquiring the right-of-way and the bike lanes and the sidewalks for that level. I can leave this up front if anybody wants to take a look at it. It's also available online under Master Plans on the city's webpage. The response to the Leland Road comments you receive from the public, one of the main reasons, staff, we brought this as a potential, is this area, along with some other areas in the city, were developed to county standards when there was a much lower density in this area of the city. They don't have sidewalks, they don't have bike lanes, and a lot of times, they have driveways that go directly onto this minor arterial. And as a growing city that's growing around them, there's an inherent identity difference between what's around being developed to an urban standard and what this is. And some communities have addressed this by a local improvement district where the property owners can choose to give themselves an assessment to help pay for sidewalks. You know, Southwest Portland is looking at that for some of their streets, and other cities are. But it's definitely something that has to come from the citizens, because they are taxing themselves to give themselves sidewalks. And with something like Myers Road, it's not just the citizens who are utilizing it, it's other people from neighboring developments that will be walking along these streets. So it is a community asset. However, sidewalk improvements is pretty far down on the list of capital improvements compared to all the other major intersection projects. And so a lot of times, areas like this, the only way there will be improvements or sidewalks put is through the development process. So the community needs to come to an understanding of if this area is not redeveloped, it probably won't be changed anytime soon because it is not rising to the level as all the other intersection projects in our capital improvement plan. Or, you know, the community comes to do a local improvement district. And the reason we brought this up is we wanted to find the community's interest in if sidewalks or, excuse me, or bicycle lanes were an important amenity that the community wanted to see in this area. And we were more than happy to talk about all the potential options on how you can get that. But I can tell you from experience, really, the two are is letting development pay for the sidewalks as they go, or providing a local improvement district.
Well, I just wanted to point out, in some of the comment letters that we've received, people have made a really good point about the need to try to preserve nature in the development properties that we have. And as we've been going through the work session process since March of this year, one of the ordinances that we are required to enact is the Nature in the Neighborhoods Title 13 ordinance, which is a metro regional requirement for all cities in the Portland metro area. And we're going through a mapping process to identify exactly where the habitat that we are required to protect under that Title 13. It's called Title 13 of the Metro Regional Framework Plan. And in each city, has to adopt an ordinance to implement that title, because we're all part of the metro plan. And Oregon City is looking at adopting a new overlay zone that will incorporate our stream protection overlay zone, which is an existing overlay zone, and a new habitat overlay zone that will look very similar to our stream protection overlay zone, but the function is slightly different, because the stream protection zone will protect stream quality. In addition, the habitat overlay zone is intended to protect the vegetated corridor and the habitat right next to those streams. And because we have housing needs and various other things, Metro is telling Oregon City that there are areas next to streams that we do have to protect, and there are upland habitat areas where we do not have to regulate, but we have to provide incentives for people to preserve trees and corridors in those areas. So primarily, what this new code will do, and we're still looking for public comment on this code as it goes forward, is to protect the stream site habitat quality along our existing intermittent and perennial streams. And that's including Abernathy Creek, portions of Newell Creek, Clackamas River, what else? Livsey Creek up in the new urban growth boundary area, and any tributaries to those creeks that show up on the metro habitat map. And if you go online on the metro website and you punch in your street address, a habitat map will show up for your parcel of land, and it'll see whether the habitat that is on your property is something that Metro requires that we protect, or it's not, or if it's not going to be regulated. So as we move forward, we're going to be refining the map based on our existing slope data, and we're looking for public input on that. And just as an update for the commission, our geographic information department is still working on the maps for that, so that we're looking at the slope data and where exactly the bottoms of the streams are, so that we have an accurate map to adopt before we finally adopt the ordinance. And so it's moving forward.
Well, don't use the counties in mapping, because they got the cul-de-sac wrong.
Oh, just to give an update to the property owners of longstanding court, you know, there is a process to amend the right-of-way and.
Medal law.
Medal law, I'm sorry. Medal, there is a process to amend, but you'd have to have all the property owners that are in that cul-de-sac work together to kind of rededicate where it should be and dedicate the area right-of-way. We'd be more than happy on a staff level to work with you, but we need every property owner at that cul-de-sac to come with us together, because we need all property owners to be involved in that. But we can work with you to replat it in the right location. But I think the problem before is that we've just gotten one property owner coming in, and we can kind of give the answer, but it takes the whole cul-de-sac at the end to do it.
So we all have to show up, or we all have to write something?
Well, you'll have to, some, I think the easiest is to, if you could make someone a project leader to speak on behalf to get the planning stages, and at some point, we'll need all the signatures to do the, to do the dedication. After we're done, you can, I can give you my card, and we can set up a time, but you know, we have to bring our engineering division in and kind of the process, and what's the next step, because I'm only one part of that. But there is a way to replat your area.
Okay. Anything else from staff?
I have a question for staff.
Dan, Commissioner Lejoie.
So we're looking at some potential rezoning here. We've heard from citizens and their concerns. When was the last time, and I know these answers, but it's more for, what was the last time we looked at these kinds of considerations?
2004.
Okay. And when's the next time we're going to be looking at?
I don't know. It's a good question. Oftentimes, it coincides when we do a larger city code update. The last time we did it was in 2004, when we adopted our comprehensive plan. This code update is really being triggered by the implementations of the concept plan. So it's going to probably be some other external process where we're pushing. So it might be, you know, four to six more years.
Well, it's an interesting challenge, because you have people that are on the opposite side of annexations that say, well, we don't need, don't annex any more land, because we have lots of land we can build on, and we have people that live in the land saying, you're not building here. It's a real challenge, and it's real difficult for us, just, we're not making excuses, it's just, we, which it is a difficult decision. And we have to weigh what's the best benefit fit for the community, what's the benefit for the citizens that live there. So it's not something we just decide and move forward with. It's something we will have a lot of discussion about. So we ask that you stay involved and communicate with us. We all will give you as much time as you need to talk, especially at meetings, but there's going to be a lot more meetings that you'll have an opportunity to make your points. So feel free to do that. You can do it in writing, you can do it verbally. We'll have at least one, if not more, and the city commission will have two or three probably as well before this goes forward. So we appreciate your comments, and the fact that you're here is important to us. At this time, if there are no more comments from the commission, then I believe we can look at a motion to move, to continue this to November 10th, Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lejoie.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dunn.
Okay. We have a motion to continue Planning File L 0801 to November 10th, 2008. Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner, Chair Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And to remind everybody who are in the audience how to keep involved in this process, there are many ways. Our website is one of them. If you go to the Planning Commission link on the bottom left-hand side of your main webpage, www.orcit.y.org, you can get ahold of the Planning Commission packet for each Planning Commission hearing. We try to get it up maybe the Wednesday before the Monday meeting online, so you can see what the topics are for that Planning Commission. The Planning Commission meets the second and fourth Tuesday, or, excuse me, Monday of the month. And we were now live streaming video. And you can also, when you're at the Planning Commission agenda, you'll see the link to the streaming video, so you can watch upcoming meetings, and also at the city commission level. And I think we will be announced, we'll probably do the same thing we've done with this, is of the many city commission hearings, the one that will be addressing code, zone changes will probably be on a specific night, and we will let you know. Everyone that has come in and given us your mailing addresses, we will let you know. And if you didn't speak but want to kind of get on the mailing list, please fill that, one of these cards out, and we will put it into the record, and you will get notice when it goes to the city commission.
All right, thank you, Christine. Appreciate it. And if that, have you any other things else for the commission?
Not right now.
Not at this time?
Okay, Laura, you haven't said a word.
Just watching in tonight. We got our Granicus Live for the first time this evening, so.
Excellent.
Laura is our contact for streaming live video.
I like it.
And she's going to teach us how to get that. And the city commission, planning commission, and Historic Review Board are scheduled to be streaming videos, as well as, over the year, you'll see various, just, community videos we will put online, such as the candidates forum, which is currently available online. You can watch what happened last week at the Abernathy Center for all of the candidates. They were available to answer questions from the audience, and that is available online.
Great. Thank you very much. And I will just remind everyone that you get to vote, and you should take advantage of that, and please do so. We, our ballots are in the mail, and mine is now in the mail to the, to the county. So thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it, and we are now adjourned.